All right, welcome to the Orville Planning Commission meeting for March 4th, 2021. Jackie, would you like to explain the Zoom procedures, or should I?
Those of you who are joining us tonight on Zoom, as members of the public, if you would like to speak at this meeting, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen to speak during an item that is on the agenda. So when that item is called up and the commissioners are having their presentation from staff and applicants, that would be the time to use the raise your hand feature so that the chair and myself can see that you would like to speak on an item on the agenda. If you are calling in from a cellphone or a landline, you want to press star nine on your keypad to raise your hand.
Okay, could you please call order? Real car, please.
Marissa, or Commissioner Helen?
President.
Commissioner Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Ayers?
Here.
Commissioner Flicker?
Here.
Commissioner Sheard?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Jenkins?
Here.
Chairperson Durling.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we will hear any non-agenda items from the public. Does anybody have anything they wish to address the planning commission that is not on the agenda today?
Mr. Chairperson, I am not seeing anyone from the public looking to speak on this item. I know that Commissioner Sheard would like to speak during the commissioner reports later on something.
Okay, all right, we'll do that after the meeting then. So we will get right to, I'll open the public hearing, and we will get to item number one for our staff report.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Wes Ervin, City Planner. The first item is a use permit modification to expand the Coyote Grill formerly named the Exchange Restaurant. A new owner, Charles Gaddy Chaz, is completing the expansion begun by the previous owner. Previous owner operated under a use permit, so this expansion requires a use permit modification. There is an updated kitchen, updated bathrooms, two new dining rooms, the basement space, and rear outdoor seating, which are included in this application. The expanded restaurant will eventually, or may eventually, take up the entire Washington Block building, which is on the corner of Myers and Montgomery, a landmark building with no external changes, so exterior signage will come later. If that requires review, or if there end up being significant exterior changes to the building, it will be brought before the Historic Advisory Commission for review and approval. Bill Legrone, the city manager, has offered to refund the use permit fee if the owner creates 15 documented new jobs and that are still there after one year, and that would be subject to city council approval. The rebate refund would be $1,085.54, which is the cost of the use permit modification. There are a couple of notes on the proposed conditions, which are in the resolution and in the letter of approval. So on page 17 of your packet, condition number six, which specifies the hours of operation, our city administrator noticed that Fridays are not mentioned, and Chaz does intend to keep the restaurant open on Fridays. So the modification to this condition would be Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The other, so that is a proposed change to the conditions. The other condition is just-
Wes?
Yes.
I think you mean 2:00 a.m.
What did I say, 2:00 p.m.?
2:00 p.m., just for clarification.
2:00 a.m., thank you. The other is condition number 13, having to do with trash enclosures. We would like to emphasize that due to the limited space in this establishment and in Miners Alley, the applicant is encouraged to collaborate with other businesses in achieving the proper enclosures. We note that the city is also engaged now in working towards a collaborative solution, so the applicant may not, in the end, be required to build his own trash enclosure. Staff recommends approval with that one change on the hours of operation, and Chaz, the owner, is here tonight to make a presentation if he so desires and to answer any questions. The Development Review Committee met on this on February 11th and recommends approval. Are there any current quick-
Does the commission have any current questions for staff? We'll get back to it in the debate. No? Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
I'm very close in all the modifications that are being done, actually quite excited about the project. I think it's gonna do some good things for downtown. I own a home downtown, one of the buildings I've renovated, but initially I will just be opening the old Exchange Side first, as well as the patio, and as quickly as possible moving into the corner and expanding there. The basement will require some issues, should I move into that, that later, which would be more kind of probably a wine storage and area down there, but there are some issues with fire sprinkling, depending on how many square feet I move to, so that's down the road. But the point of asking for it now was, if it gets to that point, to not have to come forward again and ask for approval down there, it will be driven by code in terms of whether or not I can actually serve down there at that time. So initially, I anticipate in about another four weeks being able to open the Exchange Side, the old Exchange Side, as well as the patio and the kitchen. All permits have been approved. The liquor license actually transferred into my name last week. I still have to go in front of, or not in front of, but give a proposal to ABC for the expansion. I believe that Wes had talked to her initially when Jesse was looking to expand the Exchange, so hopefully there will be no issues with them, especially, I was waiting until I got a official approval before I moved forward with that, but the documentation is ready for that to send in tomorrow. All of the drawings are done for that, and everything that they require on the fees will be sent in tomorrow. So hopefully that will be about a two-week process, and then I should be official from the liquor license expansion perspective. And then, once I get open, as I say, on the old Exchange Side, I'm anticipating probably about eight to 12 weeks to move into the corner, which I think is, you know, a premier location down here that needs to be activated. It's been vacant 60 years, and I think it's gonna just help bring some foot traffic and volume to downtown. So that's about it.
So basically, Chaz, you're gonna open up the back of the Exchange towards the alley a little more, right?
Correct. Where they were actually serving during COVID, when everything got shut down, they moved out there and were serving there, and that had been temporarily approved by ABC, and I believe the city as well, but it was not a permanent approval on either. So that will become a permanent seating area weather permitting.
So you work in, you work on the corner unit first and then move into the middle, right?
No, just the opposite. The Exchange Side, the old Exchange-
Well, I understand that. That'll open first.
Correct.
Then the next one would be in the corner-
Correct.
-where the stairs are.
Correct.
And then you'll work on the middle.
Well, in the middle is currently, again, there's currently a retail tenant in there, Tiny Hines, and as far as I know, she's not planning on going anywhere, and I believe actually that my business will help to, you know, make her business more successful just due to sheer foot traffic. So again, that was, the intention of that was mainly, should she vacate that space? I do have first right of refusal on it, and then at that time, I would expand into it.
Okay, yeah, because I can see there's access from the Exchange into the corner unit, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Into the kitchen, and in that event, should that occur, that the middle space did become available, that would require opening up a wall and obviously the permitting and structural engineering surrounding that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good idea. I mean, yeah. First one question, you gave up the one on Bird Street, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, at the time, it was, I was gonna, I won the liquor lottery a couple of years ago, and I had the Bird Street building at that time. I have the old Pack Bell building, which I've fully renovated, but Bird Street One is Bird Street, and parking is tougher there, and Montgomery is, you know, prime, and I was actually gonna go into the corner at that time when I had the liquor lottery, and just timing was off with something, so I surrendered my liquor license at that time. And in the meantime, I've sold that building to Brian Wong, the, I call it the Firebird, the building on Bird that caught on fire. And so now I just have my Montgomery, I mean, my untuned property, the old Pack Bell building, and actually working right now, trying to get a grant to redo that big logo sign on the side of that. I pressure washed it and got it all exposed, but we're working to try to get that restored as well right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Thank you. Open to public hearing.
Mr. Chairperson, I am not seeing anyone raising their hand wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and debate between the commissioners, and if there's no debate, open for motion.
I think it's a good idea, I really do.
Would anybody like to make a motion then?
Go ahead, Tan.
Sure. Let's see here, let me read this here. Make a motion to adopt use permit UP 21-01, including the recommended findings of permit conditions and adopt Resolution Number P 2021-01.
Ms. Chairperson, are you also, adoption of the notice of exemption?
Do you want to change on item?
Did I miss it?
The top.
Oh, minor use permit for the expansion, under, now under new ownership, that one?
Under-
Did I miss a spot?
That one.
Ah, recommend adoption of the notice of exemption, sorry, as the appropriate level of environmental review in accordance with SEQA. Okay, now I got it all.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Would you open for a vote, please?
The motion carries with six yeses and one absent.
Good luck, Chaz.
Mm-hmm. Can't wait. We'll all be there.
And we'll move on to item two.
Staff presentation, please.
Thank you. This is the 12-unit proposed subdivision and planned development overlay at 7-Eleven Montgomery, a parcel that's owned by the city that's a site of a formerly demolished cluster of rental cottages. The commission discussed this project at its last meeting on January 28th, and at that meeting, the commission applauded the project's concept and value to the community. However, given the project's location at the gateway to downtown, the commission asked the applicant to return with a facade that better reflects the downtown Oroville turn-of-the-century historic theme. As also requested, staff separately consulted Jerry Schroeder, an experienced architect knowledgeable in Oroville's historic downtown. He actually helped design the renovation of the Carnegie Library here in 2000, 2001, and was the architect of record for part of the Gold Country Casino construction up there. Jerry's comments are in the staff report, pages 32 to 33. Applicant took those comments under advisement along with those of their own architect, and the revised facade is on page 30 to 31 on the screen, and you have hard copies in front of you, 11 by 17s. Staff believe the new rendering meets the commission's desired criteria. Applicant also responded to the second concern about the density by stating that Calvet, the funding entity, would consider a less dense project, less feasible financially, and would prefer to finance a more dense project such as the 12 units proposed. Applicant may want to comment on this as well. The applicant has several attendees by Zoom, and I can't see them here, but Kent Trimble, Tori Cartelino, Don Russell, and Keith Dogllo. And as a reminder, the project includes a planned development overlay, a tentative subdivision map, a general plan amendment to medium-high-density residential, and zoning code amendment to R3, all of which must be approved by the city council upon the recommendation of this commission. So staff recommends that the commission move it forward to city council.
Thank you. Does the commission have any current questions for staff? No, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Don Russell, from RGA. So after our last meeting, I mean, we took under advisement the comments we got from the commission, that they'd like to see a more turn-of-the-century look. We've expanded the porches, you'll see, we've changed window pane sizing to smaller window panes, which was one of the other architects' recommendations to, you know, in the older days, windows had smaller panes of glass. Added some crafts, some more craftsmen detail, some gable vents made them different on the different models. Added some pop-outs on the front of the three-bedroom, and then a bay window on one of the two-bedroom unit models. Added dormers, because we had a comment that one of the commissioners didn't like to see shed roof, they thought that was out of character for the area, so we added dormers on those models. Added a color palette. You'd see it better on the front elevation, where you can see the different colors. We're not stuck on those colors or using that, but we would provide a color palette to mix up as we went down. They wouldn't all be the same color. We added shutters on many of the units in where we could, and that was one of the requests that we had. You know, overall, I think we've made an attempt to meet the design requirements. We didn't change the density, it's what we want and what it needs for the project to work with Calvet. You know, I think it's a good opportunity for the, for the city to show, you know, their commitment to moderate-income housing, and the fact that this is owned, you know, these will be owned units, not rental units, and they're targeted for a specific, well-deserving audience of veterans. So that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah.
I do. The ADA, is that adaptable, or is it ADA-approved?
We don't have ADA-
You do not have any-
No, because they're all single-family units.
Okay. Okay.
And I have a question. The homes only, I think last time we asked, how long do veterans have to, the veterans who bought, who own the home-
Yes.
-have to live in it, and can they rent it out?
We were told, I'm not the expert on that. I know Kent was here. Kent is, is Kent on the line, or Brad is on the line? I believe it's-
No, Kent's out of pocket right now.
I believe it's five years, right, Brad?
So we would like them to live there for five years, and they can live there as long as they want, as long as they're comfortable there. It's an owner-occupied unit. They will reach their maximum capacity for return on equity in the house after five years. So we provided them with some motivation in order to stay with the house for five years.
And you have another project on Mitchell Avenue in our historic district that is in the works?
We are looking at a site on Mitchell behind the Corp Yard.
Okay, and that's in the historic district also? So this, there'd be two of these-
No, that would be outside of the historic district.
Right across from it, it'd be on the other side of Mitchell.
Yes.
But two projects fairly close to each other.
That's a different project, it's not the same, we're not doing the same project.
It's a low-income, supportive-type housing situation.
It's apartments.
Apartments, low-income-
Yeah, it's apartments.
Yes.
Supportive housing apartments.
We are, we are working on a schematic design for that at this point.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Open to public comment.
Mr. Chairperson, I do not see anyone raising their hand at this time wishing to speak.
Somebody is physically-
Actually, sorry, okay.
A physical hand.
So we'll start with Karen Christ and then Celia Hirschman. Karen, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Got that, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I spoke at the last meeting where this topic was discussed, and at that time, as a homeowner on Montgomery, I had given a conditional approval, and I would like to withdraw that conditional approval, particularly in light of the fact that there is another project on Mitchell being considered. As Commissioner Sheard said, I think that's just too many low-income, supportive housing units within the historic overlay, or adjacent to the historic overlay. I think that's really quibbling when it's just across the street. I think that it doesn't really support the city's goals that it's laid out in the 2030 Plan, and I just think that there's a better use of space when Montgomery Street is the center of the kind of hopes and dreams for downtown Oroville. Thank you for listening, I'm concluding my comments.
Celia, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, she's probably there.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, terrific, thank you. So I spoke also at last meeting, but actually, what I'm gonna comment on now is a little different. I didn't know until after I spoke that this was a five-year minimum requirement. We, as a community, we've been hearing about the Veterans Village for quite a while, and if this is going to be a Veterans Village, which it sounds like it might, I must insist that if it's gonna be sitting on the gateway, that it have, that everybody's in the game, especially the city, for more than five years. That's crazy. Otherwise, it's just five-year entry fee, now it's low-income housing at the front of what we all consider the gateway to downtown Oroville, which is the only unique feature of Oroville downtown and of the area besides the lake. So to me, this is an incredibly important piece of real estate, and if the city can't make a 20- or 30-year commitment, I don't know what we're doing. And those are my comments.
Mr. Chairperson, that is the last public speaker that I have on this item.
Oh, no, really?
Okay, Heather Johnson, you would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Okay, I'm pushing all kinds of buttons. So I, I'm so happy to be here, and I, this is my first kind of meeting, but I'm a part of the Downtown Business Association, I'm on the board, and we, we have been discussing the gateway for quite some time, and even in just the business center of historic downtown Oroville, we're really looking at what are sustainable, viable, like, we're building a future for the town, not just one business at a ti, you know, not just to make a quick profit, but we're really looking at what is sustainable and has longevity and could really add to what is the charm that we have in Oroville beyond a lot of other downtowns. And so we look at the gateway as really like this, this hello, welcome to downtown Oroville as a really important spot. And when we first heard about this project, we were so excited because, you know, just hearing that it was a place where veterans could actually come and buy a home, and it was available to them is special. Couple of concerns we had were, is this the right location? What are the services? We're kind of, this is really, we're not putting actually services in for them before we're putting housing, we're kind of putting them, these houses into a place where there are, just to be really frank, just some sketchy areas down there, and it doesn't really have the infrastructure for putting people in there as far as where they're gonna walk to to get food, or what they're going to inhabit in their everyday lives. And I do understand that it is a, it is a project that is for the betterment of that area. However, will it be successful and sustainable if really a veteran could, just sounds like they could buy the place and then rent it out immediately? I know the equity is a great, you know, incentive, but there's no stipulations where they have to be there for five years? And what we're really looking for is twofold, is, is there a better place for this housing that can really service the veterans at the same time and not put them in kind of scary situation down there? And can we think of businesses and, and things that we could bring there that would really make this entrance to the downtown, historic downtown, a, an amazing view from the public's view from coming down the freeway, and really inviting and enticing and raise the value of this entire historic district? So these are the things we're talking about, and that we're very, you know, interested in continuing the conversation, and that's our thoughts on that. So thank you for letting me share.
Mr. Chairperson, it looks like Bee Long would like to speak, I think that's one of our applicants.
I'm Brad Long, I'm the Executive Director of the Veterans Housing Development Corporation. We're the ones that are proposing this project. Couple of things I'd like to address concerning the comments is that, one, Calvet does not allow for rental in this situation. Calvet is very similar to a VA home loan. It has to be your primary residence, you have to be living there. So, and also, this is not a low income. These are veterans that could qualify for a conventional loan and buy a house anywhere that they want to. The specific reason that veterans like myself go with either a VA or a Calvet is we get extremely good mortgage rates and no closing costs. uh, good mortgage rates and no closing costs. And, uh, we, we like to also live by other veterans. And so that's why, why we're looking at this. So it's, it's not a low income and, uh, they, they cannot rent. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to correct potentially some misconceptions that could be out there.
Thank you. I have a question on that. What do you mean they can't rent ever? They can never?
They can't rent the house out. It has to be their primary residence.
Or just when they apply for the loan or they can never rent out the house? It can never be turned into a rental?
Rent out that house to somebody else. They would have to, they would have to sell to another veteran. So if, if they decide to vacate the property, it would have to be sold to another veteran.
And who is monitoring that?
Calvet.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to add to that, those homes are also a part of that homeowners association for that block that they sit on.
Yep.
Mr. Chairperson, oh, um, it's up to you guys at this point. Celia Hirschman and Karen Christ are asking to speak again, but we typically only allow the public one opportunity to speak at the meeting per item.
Commission, good, bad?
Well, of course I say good.
Yes, no? All right, we'll, we'll let one more time.
Um, okay, Karen Christ?
Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak again. Um, I'm a little confused by Mr. Long's comments because that is not what we heard at the last meeting, um, as far as veteran ownership. And also, all the information I've seen on this project does label it a low-income supportive housing development. Even going so far as to lay out the percentage of the median income that the, the home purchasers would, um, be allowed to qual- or would be expected to qualify for, which is, um, in a low-income bracket. So I'm, I'm just confused because it seems like the information has changed from last meeting to this meeting. And I would just like to hear that clarified once again emphatically so that, uh, I'm not confused again. Thank you.
The, uh, speaker is, is talking about, um, bullet point number three on page 24 of the staff report, where I made inquiries to our housing manager and, uh, the statement was that, uh, this would be available to, uh, veterans earning 80% of the median income for the area. And, uh, Brad, if you, uh, want to contradict that, that would be fine. You know more, uh, about this project.
No, yeah, and, and 80%, um, uh, with good credit, you can, you can qualify for a Calvet loan. So, um, I'm, the specific qualifications of low income I was not addressing. So it's, it's not like this is like 50% or below, uh, average median income. This is 80%.
Nope, you're not on. Oh, you're still not on.
Better here. Use your tap, tap, there you go.
For veterans only, correct? Okay.
Okay, I have a question. Is there a way to put, uh, deed restrictions on there so they cannot be rented?
I'd have to defer to Brad on that.
Oh, I thought I was. Is, is Dawn on?
Dawn is not on. He's here in our room.
He, he referred the question to you. Brad?
Oh, um, yeah, and that's, that's, um, also, I believe a restriction by Calvet also. It has to be your primary residence.
Okay, so when they go to sell it, if they want to say they, they buy it, they live their five years and they want to sell it, it's to another vet- veteran and, and the only qualification is a veteran and being able to get the Calvet loan? Is that right?
I'm sorry you cut out a little bit there, please.
When they go to sell it, say they want to sell it in five years, does Calvet want, do they set the price and do they, and they have to qualify by getting another Calvet loan, correct?
Correct.
And then, so they can't rent it? Can they will this property to, uh, to a wife or a child?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
So this is really different than what was said before. That the only, because you are making it sound like veterans will be living in it only, veterans, well beyond the five years. And that is not what I think I heard from him or what we heard last week. So it, did it change?
I, I was not party to the last meeting.
Mr. Chairperson, you have one more public speaker that would like to speak and then you can limit the discussion between Commissioners if you would like to.
We'll get the last speaker and then we'll, uh, we'll limit it to Commissioners.
Celia Hirschman? Hold on.
Thank you. You can hear me now, I'm guessing. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So Mr. Long, because of the change I had, and my concern was, uh, absolutely, we were just, when they sold it after they initially bought it, if they sold it within five years, it'd go to a veteran. If it was, say, tiers, it could go to anyone. After five years, this was open to anyone. And what I'd like to know, because I'd hate for this meeting to make a decision on, uh, a, a statement that is not actually well legally, um, true. I want to know if definitively, if you can tell us that this is going to be a Veterans Village from today to the next 30 years and/or that no one can rent houses in Veterans Village. Those two things, because those are our issues.
There, there will be a deed restriction that it only goes to another veteran. That only a veteran can purchase this property.
All right, I'm gonna close the, uh.
I add infinitum, forever.
Uh, we're, we're not gonna do discussion, uh, we'll just do comments. I'm gonna close the public comment now. Um, I, uh, just to clarify with staff, Planning Commission is just making a recommendation to the City Council, correct? We are not approving this.
That is correct. Normally, uh, the Planning Commission would approve the tentative subdivision map, but our codes specify that because it is a planned development overlay, that that map must also be approved by the City Council. So every decision you make tonight ends up being a recommendation to the City Council.
Thank you. Uh, so is there any discussion between Commissioners?
Yes.
Questions, go ahead.
I still, I still do not think that this project is worth making the change to the general plan and the zoning in such an important, um, corridor and our front door to downtown. And I know it's weird to look at it like kind of from a big picture, but we're really trying to clean up that entrance. I mean, when you walk now at the front door, depending on what time of day you go, you have a nice preschool, but then you've got people bathing out there, you know? I just feel like it's time to set our heights a little bit higher. And the city owns this land and I would just love to see the city do something here that really enhances the goals and the vision for the historic district. It's just not this location. For me, I feel like it's against the general plan and there's a lot of work that went into this. And this is our constitution and our historic district overlay. And I don't feel like we need more supportive low-income housing. I feel like we have done a really good job taking care of people in our neighborhood, especially in the downtown historic district.
But it's not low income.
Well, it's.
It's Calvet, which is 80% of the median income. So, I mean, low income is below 50, correct?
And so this is 80, oh, I don't know what California's low income in. I think California's low income's pretty high, actually, for this country.
I own property across the street and watched that piece of property for many, many years. This improvement right here is much better than what was there.
Absolutely.
Much better.
But that's not the goal. And there's a lot of density also. There's 12 units. I looked at the houses that are behind the alley there, which aren't a beautiful site. But that's a lot of density there also. I just do not believe it is appropriate for our gateway. I believe we can set our sites higher.
I, I disagree, but I'm just saying that this is a much better project. They did a good job on the architecture, on the elevation, I think.
I agree, in a different location. For me, in a different location.
For me, this is fine, so.
Any, anybody else have any comments or questions for staff? Um, if not, I will open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number P2020-27.
There's seven items on here that the council's asking for.
Three.
Is there, is there a quick way to sum it up or does it need to read, read them all?
You don't need to actually read them. You can refer to them.
Certifying.
Certify the notification of exemption, recommendation that the City Council approves the general plan amendment GPA 20-3, recommendation that the City Council approves zoning code amendment ZC 20-04, and recommendation that the City Council approves planned development overlay of PD-020-01.
Keep going.
Oh, okay. Approve tentative subdivision map, uh, TSM 2002 and new 12-unit subdivision subject to the City Council approval of the previous action. Uh, adopt revolu- resolutions number P2020-24 and evolution, uh, do I just go and adopt resolution number P2, well, 202027?
I'll second that.
The motion carries with five yeses, one no, and one absent.
Okay.
Is the commission report, or not, uh, category, or?
Yeah.
Would you love to make yours?
Yeah, I would love to. Um, I, at, since we are the de facto historic advisory committee, I wanted to discuss, because I don't think I can actually make a proposal right now, but I wanted to discuss going through our duties that I've given you all a handout for and making this a monthly report. You know, where we are going to advise on the historic nature of existing landmarks, um, promote and conduct interpretational programs. Um, I feel like the fragile nature of our historic district, oftentimes if monuments aren't honored and cherished and talked about and we don't even understand what's there, they lose their value. So as I was reading this, I was getting excited about, um, the type, the things that we could do. And I would just like to, and I would be so happy to spearhead it and have anyone else help me on the commission too. But I would love to just do a little brief report of what is happening in historic downtown once a month and then be able to report, um, different things and recommendations, guideline recommendations, as it says in our duties list, to the City Council once a month. So kind of bring in this element of our Planning Commission, um, and just give us more of a voice. And then my second part was, and this was my first part of doing it, um, I don't know of how many of you have done the historic downtown tour. I think it stopped for a while because of COVID. But Daniel does it. It's the first Saturday. It's just so enjoyable to be outside and to go walk around and just see the wonder and the treasure we have in those buildings downtown. It's a wonderful thing, um, and I would really love to encourage him to do it and encourage all of you to go. Is it an outside? They don't go inside, right? You don't go inside, you go outside. And part of the tour is the abandoned buildings. That's another funny, like, this lady's wig has been on in this window. That's not such a good thing, the abandoned buildings. But it's wonderful. There's so much down there. There's so much character that I wasn't even aware of and I've just been paying attention to it since I've been here, so. Who is Daniel Ballard? Daniel Ballard is a young man who lives in Oroville. He was, he's been here since he was a young boy. He works with Alberta at the Eamon House. That's how I met him, because we did a tour there. And he's just kind of that wonderful new blood who is so excited about downtown and all the history and wants to help. He's just charming. He wanted to come tonight, but he can't come in yet, so he might come in. And if we get to do a little presentation of our wonderful historic buildings, um, I would definitely love to be able to have him talk.
Cool. Thank you. Uh, if she decides to do that, would that need to be on, um, on the agenda or?
It could be agendocized as, as a presentation if this body wishes.
Okay, so if you ta- talk to staff about, about that?
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would love to. And if anyone else wanted to help me, if anyone else was interested in learning about all the wonderful buildings.
So if we have a majority consensus from the Planning Commission, then it can be placed on the next agenda.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have to have an official vote? I mean, we're all nodding, so.
You're nodding, that's fine.
Good enough. That'll work.
You're on video nodding, that's.
We're good.
Uh, do we have any other staff or director reports?
Yes, we do. Um, the next development, uh, review committee meeting will be on Thursday, March 11th at 1:30, at 2 o'clock PM.
Okay.
Is that okay? Because you're chairing it.
Yeah, I'm leaving town that day for the weekend, so, um, it's my anniversary, the 12th, so we're trying to go somewhere, but.
Congratulations.
We'll work on that. Yeah, 38 years, 39 years, something like that.
Okay, um, and the item we have on so far is a uh, 4,800 square foot proposed garage shop building, uh, on, in, um, on 2.3 acres zoned RR20. So, uh, that will be an interesting project. It's a very large shop building. A couple of items relating to downtown and to the gateway. Uh, it was announced Tuesday night that at the March 16th meeting, the next meeting, uh, there will be a presentation, uh, on the concept for the vacant land, the 12 acres at the gateway. And, uh, in front of the City Council, so that'll be a public presentation. Uh, we learned, yes.
What 12 acres?
12 acres off, right across the street from Cornucopia.
Cornucopia and Motel 6, yeah.
Yeah.
All that vacant land that's there, right at the off-ramp.
Ah, okay.
Also, uh, we learned yesterday that the old Fasinal Building on the corner of Feather River and Montgomery, across the street from the Valero, has been purchased. Uh, and it is intended to be a convenience store and a liquor store. It's now being renovated. The flea market that's there on Montgomery right now, will be disappearing effective on Saturday. And, uh, so, uh, we are working with the applicant. It is zoned C2, so, so it's a, it's a permitted use, but we are working with the applicant to be conscious and aware of the gateway location and the, the paint scheme and the historic nature, um, of that area. So that's based on, uh, input from the Planning Commission. We're still waiting for a use permit submittal from Dutch Brothers. We did, we, uh, that's on hold, you found out, Connor? For now?
One question, they're demolishing the Hidalgo's or?
That's where it would locate, yeah.
Yeah.
The Western Motor Lodge Maguire Suites at, uh, on Bird Street is still being actively worked and code compliance is, uh, is actively underway there. So there is active pro- project manager, property manager, and they're doing a great job. Connie, our new planner, who we introduced last meeting, she is on Zoom tonight. She's spearheading a zoning code amendment for sidewalk vending, which is to comply with state law that was enacted in 2019. So that'll be coming to you for review in the near future. The Ron Harmon Mine, the city's only mine, uh, and I mentioned this a couple of times, is seeking a five-year extension until 2026. There are a couple of activities that have to occur and Connie is working with Ron and his colleagues on updating the reclamation plan, revegetation plan, and is scheduled a mine inspection, annual mine inspection for next week. So, um, lastly, the sign ordinance is pushed off the council agenda last Tuesday again. The, the second reading, which would make it final. And this time it's to make sure that it is litigation proof based on some other sign codes that have, have encountered some controversy in some other jurisdictions.
So it was pulled off of it?
Okay. Continued till April 16th.
Okay.
April 16th? Okay.
April 6th.
6th? Thank you. April.
And that's all I have. I don't know if Dawn, um, has anything.
Just a, a brief addition. So you'll see that there's a lot of roadwork going on around town. We have some sewer line replacements going on that are near completion. The 2020 paving program has commenced and is near completion. So the last and final roads for 20, for the 2020 paving project will be the Feather River Boulevard corridor and Pomona Avenue. So you'll see that the pedestrian ramps have been completed along Feather River Boulevard and then the paving will commence here in the coming weeks. So they're going to be prepping that soon. So we'll have a beautiful new boulevard down Feather River. Also, the staff has been working on two statewide parks grant applications. And I know this isn't planning related, but it's community related and we all live in our community. So, um, two statewide parks grant applications to enhance Bedrock Park and the Levy Trail, add lighting, striping, signage, and complete the connection under the Table Mountain Boulevard Bridge to the Feather River Nature Center. The second application, it would be for the Phase 2 of Hewitt Park to finally complete that section, um, of that park to add pickleball courts, a splash pad, inclusive playgrounds, recreational lawn area, added lighting, um, other amenities. So lots of good things happening. We still have a lot of interest from developers for our community. We get calls frequently for more housing and commercials. So be proud of your community. There's a lot going on here. We're the hot ticket right now in California.
I agree.
Quick question. The, um, I've noticed around the roundabout by Boss Burger that the, uh, the nice rail has been damaged.
Both sides.
How long does that stay damaged?
So our engineer has been working on an alternative to the rail and it would be, uh, block pillars with interpretive block panels in between. So there would be, um, tabs with rivets. So the block panels, should they be damaged, be pulled out and replaced. Still under engineering right now. It's being drawn up. But we're hoping to have something completed in that area that's a little more crash-proof in the near future.
I thought we had agreed on, it was like coming all the way down the road and around the corner. Didn't that get accepted?
It did get accepted. We had put it out for a request for proposal and the one we received back was just shy of $3 million. A little outside of what we budgeted.
Just for the fence, all the way down the road, huh?
Yep, for the, yeah. So, um, we're going back to the drawing board and hoping that we can do the drawings in house because what we had put out was a design build, you know, bring us what your ideas are. That failed. So we are trying to do it in-house, get it engineered and then put the engineered plans out for proposal.
Yeah, get a better price, hopefully.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, if that's it, we will adjourn the meeting to March 25th, 2021 at 6 o'clock.